This is Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 7th meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting at www.xslaportecounty.org.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see such a lovely big crowd on this wonderful September morning. Welcome to the LaPorte County Commission meeting for Wednesday, September 7th. Let's rise for the pledge. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
All three are present.
At this time, I would like us to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Madam President, we have a couple of things to add here. First thing would be from the Chief Probation Officer, Steve Ira. Permission to travel to the National Association for Pretrial Services Agencies in Atlanta, Georgia, September 18th to 21st. Also, we have the contract renewal that we just got this morning for Rave. And also something we had been discussing this week, but we didn't get it on the agenda, is to allow permission to contact our real estate professional about excess properties in Michigan City. We could add those three.
Madam President, yes, there are two additional items I'd like to add to the agenda under requests. One from the Coroner's Office request to approach counsel for additional appropriations and another request slash presentation from American Fidelity.
All right. We have, I believe that's five new things to add to the agenda. At this time, I would consider a motion.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, we have approval of the August 17th, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our meeting for August 17th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, we have consideration of claims.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period ending August 26, 2022, in the amount of $1,282,234.46. And we have operating expense claims for the same period in the amount of $3,241,413.67.
I'd make a motion to approve the payroll.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the amount for payroll. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Claims for payroll has been approved.
Yeah, claims, I have some questions for our auditor. Does this include, have you manually added the June litigation claims and the April and May non-litigation claims?
I believe that, I believe that you added those at a previous meeting. I believe you went all the way through June at a previous meeting when you made a motion to add those items. So those would have been previously approved a few meetings back through June. I believe, we'd have to check your minutes for certain, but I think that was only a few meetings back, so I'm going under the assumption that these were previously approved by you.
My understanding, this was discussed on Friday, and they would promise that they would be added.
That is my belief that they were previously approved by you. I think that you went through June, but...
It's my recollection as well, that's what occurred.
Well, if they were added previous meeting, wouldn't they have been paid by now?
No, because as the discussion we had at the previous meeting was that those items were in dispute. And while you were approving their payment, it was ultimately the Auditor's Office that decided whether enough documentation was had on certain items. And since the time that you approved those items, there was back and forth between me and the vendor, and which resolved those items enough that a partial payment could be made and the rest will be dealt with in court. But...
I would move to approve the claims as presented.
Since the vendor is here, maybe we could just...
Yes, so then we can expect the checks this week, as per your representation on Friday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Because we'll be added then, okay.
So they're added?
And before we approve this, I have another question about, not sure what to make of this. It's a bill for $12,250 for SEH. It just shows a whole bunch of days where they're charging per day $136 an hour, day after day after day, from May through June. No explanation as to what that's for, since it's a pretty sizable amount of money. I wonder if I can get an explanation, what...
Well, I'm not gonna be able to, I'm not gonna explain it right here, right now, but SEH, if that's for budget-related matters?
I don't know, it doesn't really tell me all that.
I would suggest that we...
If this is something that is ongoing, or if this is something to fix some of the problems that have come up?
Was that paid through the Auditor's Office or the Treasurer's Office? Was that paid through the Auditor's Office or the Treasurer's Office?
Auditor, Tim Stables, he says right here.
I think my request would be that we could take this offline and we can discuss SEH and Damon Sukles' deals directly with my chief deputy, so he probably has his own time clock or his own accountability for the time that Damon spends with us, because he spends it with my chief deputy directly. So he probably can reconcile that time to his own records or so. But I can't answer your question right here, right now, on each item in that...
I would then make a motion to approve the claims minus this. Until we get an explanation, taxpayers should know.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to approve operating claims expenses minus the SEH bill that...
What is that amount, please, I'm sorry?
What is the amount, $12,000 something?
$12,250. No, wait, yeah. $12,250 and 0.09.
There's a prior motion on the floor, Madam President.
Then what motion are you speaking of?
The motion I made to approve the claims as presented.
We separated the claims out. Payroll, we approved that. And operating, did you get a second? I didn't hear a second. So the motion died for lack of a second.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have another motion on the floor that does not have a second to pay the operating expense claims minus the $12,000-plus bill from SEH until the document has more information on it. I would entertain a second. I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second to pay operating expense claims with the deduction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very.
We have a nay, two ayes and a nay, the motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Just before we start public comment, we all know that Labor Day signifies the start of election season, so I would appreciate it if we kept our comments not focused on elections, although we are all Americans and we love our elections. But this is a business meeting, so please entertain comments that have to do with county business, festivals, all the wonderful things happening in our community, or complaints of things that aren't working well for you. All right, any members of the public who wish to speak?
Good morning, I'm Sue Reed, Executive Director for Healthy Communities of LaPorte County. Our office is in Michigan City on Franklin Street. We're located in the Star Center. Healthy Communities is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization that actually began in 1997 as an initiative from LaPorte Hospital. They then joined forces with St. Anthony Hospital, now known as Franciscan Health, and funded us up through 2006. At that time, Healthy Communities was able to become self-sustainable through various grants, and we considered, continue to receive grants from the Healthcare Foundation, Dunland Health Council, as well as Franciscan, to name a few. We are in the process of expanding our fundraising efforts to start receiving donations from the corporate sector as well as private donations. Our mission is to promote the health and well-being of our residents, and we have a few different programs in place to accomplish this. We are the lead agency for Covering Kids and Families, which is part of a statewide organization that's committed to helping children, individuals, and families gain access to healthcare coverage. We can enroll through either the marketplace or assist families in gaining coverage to a state-funded plan. We really do a lot of work with the underserved population in the county, and we have standing appointments at several homeless shelters, prenatal clinics, salvation armies, and we also participate in numerous community events, not only to show our support of the communities, but also to educate those in attendance about our services. So we're, a lot of golf outings, back-to-school rallies. Our largest outreach effort is the LaPorte County Fair, where this year we interacted with over 1,800 fair attendees. Every time we give our elevator pitch, we make a little hash mark. Our goal with these events, like I said, is to educate the community and support the community as well. For our Covering Kids and Families program, we currently employ two state-certified navigators that, as of August 31st, have processed 187 applications for our healthcare coverage. 162 of those were approved, giving us an approval rating of 87%. We still have about 15 pending applications where it takes about 45 to 90 days for an application to be approved. So we're typically right around 90% approval. We pride ourselves in that we're a full-service agency and that we offer continuous support to our clients, making sure we're available to answer any questions they have about their coverage, as well as making sure that they retain their coverage as well. We are also the lead agency for the Indiana Department of Health's Tobacco Prevention and Cessation Program. Healthy Communities has a full-time tobacco coordinator that works with local organizations, employers, and medical providers to help promote the Indiana Quit Line, as well as having smoke-free work sites and multi-unit housing. Our ultimate goal, long-range big pie in the sky, would be to have a comprehensive smoke-free policy. The tobacco program also has a youth component referred to as VOICE, where we work with our youth and teach them how to advocate for smoke-free policies and get them involved in different smoke-free events. This year, we were given a list of retailers that sell tobacco products in LaPorte County to learn how they market to our youth, as well as the community as a whole, which is referred to as point-of-sale marketing. There are 116 licensed tobacco realtors in the county, and the state assigned us 95 to audit. What we found is that 8% of those retailers are within 1,000 feet of a school, 56% of the retailers are convenience stores, and 85% of the retailers sell flavored or menthol tobacco products. These products are very popular among our youth and our young adult. The menthol and the flavor reduces the harshness of the tobacco flavor, thus making it easier to become addicted to using tobacco products and makes it much harder to quit using tobacco products. 90% of the county's retailers also offer price promotions to make it more cost-effective to purchase their products. We also learned that 20% of the retailers place tobacco advertisements within three feet of a child's eye level, and 13% have tobacco within 12 inches of candy, soda, toys, all as a way to market and engage the youth. On October 6th, we're hosting a community conversation that will take place at the Healthcare Foundation to share the full findings of this report and start the discussion about where we go as a county from here. We are in the process of expanding our services to meet another critical need in LaPorte County. According to the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte's 10/2030 report, our county has a high infant mortality rate, in which eight out of 1,000 births, the babies die. That's versus the state, where seven out of 1,000 births. We also have had the state in that over 18% of expectant mothers in LaPorte County use tobacco products versus the state at 11%. You know, I just find this alarming. When you look at the time this study was done, we received the results a year ago. The state showed LaPorte County is having over a little 112,000 for the demographics versus the state of 6.8 million. So that really shows it's a critical issue here. There are programs that can help us work on reducing these numbers. So through our Covering Kids and Families with hiring another navigator, we can reach those mothers that don't have healthcare coverage to ensure that they're receiving the necessary prenatal care. And then we also are starting training on an evidence-based program for tobacco cessation for expectant mothers, where throughout the pregnancy, they're periodically tested either with a breathalyzer, which will pick up if they're using tobacco, or a saliva strip to determine if they're vaping, and then there's incentives along the way. This program, it's called SCRIPT, offers reports an 8% higher success rate than other cessation programs. So like I said, we're adding an additional staff member that's really going to market and target this population. You know, at Healthy Communities, we believe everyone deserves a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible. So I thank you for your time today, and I hope you're able to join us on October 6th and/or serve on our panel. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Sue. I met Sue a couple of weeks ago at Mayor's Cup, and waiting for slower offers, we had time to talk, and she gave me a little brief introduction there to what they do. And so I asked her to be here today, share this, because I know most people were like me, that I had no idea of all the good positive things going on in the county, and it's really refreshing to hear of positive things in the county for a change, and they do amazing work. Make sure you send me an email on October 6th, I definitely want to plan on being there.
Okay, I'll send you a follow-up.
Thank you for all you do and all of your people that helped out.
Thank you, Sue.
Great, thank you, have a good day.
Appreciate you being here. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reed.
Rainy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road, LaPorte, Indiana. May I approach, please? Thank you. I want to start off with covering some of the items that were discussed at the last meeting. I was really hoping that what is drug on in my neighborhood now into its eighth year would be over. It's a never-ending story. I feel for the people on 1,000 North. Veersaw tries to open a sand excavation site for profit. BZA says no. He is now landscaping, giving some sand away. Yeah, right. Nicole Mesgar, the new MS4, shared a political hot potato handed to her. I truly feel for her. She gives assessments that she sees, not knowing some of the details that have happened over the past many years. At this point, should she believe the Veersaw is just contouring? Probably yes. Next, we have Mr. Friedman step up and talk about agricultural projects versus commercial projects, and hints at liabilities. Let's think that a commercial project is selling sand to multiple projects. Maybe city projects like Newport Landing, school projects, Handley School, Kessling School, state projects, Trail Creek, the list is long. Thousands and thousands of dollars, that sounds commercial. Now, from the last meeting, here's where my neighborhood has brought up again. Ms. Mesgar states the sand mining is a buzzword in the county right now. She talks of the Selkey site on Schultz Road. That's another operation that started around eight years ago, selling sand on and off again. It has been mostly off this year after the DNM site was shut down. The neighborhood shouldn't be discouraged from keeping a watchful eye on this property. Let's remember, his borrow pit, his borrow pit permit expired on June 9th, 2021. This was before Ms. Mesgar was running this department. At 16 minutes into the meeting, she brings up that the contractors of LaPorte County were never properly monitored by the last department heads. She then reminds everyone the code was in place in 2016. She speaks to someone else in place in 2016. Then we get Mike Poland up to the microphone. He starts a rant, his own words rant, about waiting months while the reviews are taking place. What reviews took place? I didn't see any during any meetings. He admits that he was the former president of the MS4 and now current Plan Commission president. He makes comments about dealing with these sites before. He should have, he was in charge. So why is there still a problem? Without naming names, he talks of slander. I have never heard anybody slander him, only agreements to what he has said. He was in charge. I said he was in charge when he falsified the paperwork. I've said that in here many a times. I've handed you the paperwork many a times. He was in charge when he lied about my family. I've said that in here many a times. I have the emails, you have the emails. He is doing this during department head comments and reports. He brings up harassment of other departments. I'm not sure what departments, if he wants individuals' names, I would say Anthony Hendricks comes didn't mind. It was his paperwork that was turned in, which you have all been given this paperwork prior. And the paperwork involves my house disappearing. Next, he mentions two of the three commissioners that have been harassed. With that, he must not be speaking to me, because I have talked ill of all three of you for not taking more of a handle on the situation. Mr. Merzinski, I've really landed on you for, as far as I know, and everybody else tells me, you had the signs removed. I have asked Mr. Haney where he stands, I still wonder. Let's not forget about Mr. Friedman. My beef was when he misspoke about what happened in an email and in here. I think he realized his mistake because he didn't sue me. As far as now, no elected official has ever sued me yet for anything I've said up here. The next step Mr. Poland took was a victory dance around the podium. That was comical. He had to make sure everybody seen his dance. He said he was vindicated because the present-day MS4 said Selkey had not dug enough material yet, and Veersaw was not hauling offsite. He was in charge of MS4 when Selkey site and DNM site were in their prime hauling days, and there were thousands of trucks, and they required MS4 authorization. He is now president of the Plan Commission. He brings up the attorney with 20-plus years' experience. I believe he is talking about Doug Beechy, who had to recuse himself from oversights at the beginning of the DNM pit in 2015. He should still be recused today. I believe Mike Poland should join in this recusal after the victory lap he took, in between the slight words he used and the twist from reality. I think Mr. Merzinski should join the recusal as well. They're all are extremely biased. Mr. Poland stood here and stated the Selkey pit didn't have thousands of trucks. We know that, DNM did. He talks of the use of a tractor at these sites. Never have we seen a tractor. He made this comment after Ms. Mathias asked him what his department could do about sand mining complaints. He also said he would come back as the wrecking ball of truth. Wow. Just wow, he needs to recuse himself. Back on the answer to Ms. Mathias, it would be up to the commissioners to increase the staff to police all the excavating sites at Pepper, the county. You have to increase his staff for him to do his job in order for him to do his... I don't understand what he's trying to say there. Why are they already there? From eight years ago and still today. He talks of legal sand mining, let's sand mines, being in the county, then rants about costs that everybody will be subjected to if they close all the smaller excavating sites. Everyone would have to travel, his words, 60 miles away to get sand. I thought he just said there was legal sand mining pits in the county. Man, I guess he's just biased, let's listen to his words. Mr. Friedman speaks up on the subject, stating the word "borrow pit" was taken out of the code book in 2016, and the Plan Commission should take it up again. And the Plan Commission was asked to do this in 2015. Whatever happened, it never happened. Poland then brings up the 40 to 60 miles of trucking and the costs again. He states he wasn't involved, then why does he act like he knows why? It did change. Is it a scare tactic? Let's get it on record, the paperwork I handed to you when I first came up here to the podium. The item on top was definitions from the current code ordinance. Well-defined items are in there like excavating, fill material, heavy industry, residential area, commercial area. Also is in there as non-conforming areas, spot zoning. It's all in the current code as written. Next is an email dated 7/1/2015 between myself and DNM. I carbon copy Rick Brown, who was running the MS4, and Mike Poland was in charge of the MS4 at the time, I would hope to think that he shared it with him. I asked what the intentions were. I asked for warnings before the equipment operation started up again. The equipment was throwing large chunks of debris onto my property. The machine had a warning, stay back 400 feet. My property lines that property. I also addressed on that same email, you have the email right now, and you've had the email, probably none of this has ever been shared with you, won't go too far on that. I also addressed my concerns about blocking the natural stormwater runoff that was being filled in. I was concerned my property would be flooded. I was ridiculed and laughed at. My next email is to Rick Brown, MS4, and ICC Mike Poland. The date is 7/3/2015. I am again talking to them about the project. I'm calling it a project happening north of my property. I was being led to believe it was going to be a pond, as stated in the email. That's what I said in the email, 2015. This is all from 2015. I was stated it's going to be a pond, and I was starting to hear things. An inspector for the Eastman that separates our lands between DNM and mine said he heard, he was told, "sand quarry." I also mentioned in that same email that the Building Commission used the buzzword, that is today's buzzword, which came from the Building Commission in 2015, "sandmine." It's in that email. I can't fabricate an email that was written in 2015. I believe this was the birth of the buzzword of the property. Again, I questioned concerns. I had a personal, I questioned concerns, I had a personal injury to me and my family from the equipment being used on the property. Now, a couple of pictures of at least six feet of flooded property. That's on 7/18/2015. This is after a two-and-a-quarter-inch rainstorm. My property had never flooded before the roadway to the sand excavation area was installed. Now, remember, I questioned MS4 and Mike Poland to check on this two weeks earlier. Apparently, nobody ever checked. Anthony Hendricks was supposed to do all the drains, drain pipes and pipe sizes to let me know that there was not going to be a problem with my property. I told him what I knew of the pipes coming in, and I was told that isn't how drainage works. Apparently, math is different in LaPorte County. I turned in the minutes from 7/22/2015, Commissioners' Meeting. Myself and many neighbors discussed the property issue. Again, we're calling it a property issue, and the commissions refer the matter back to the Plan Commission.
Mr. Veach, may I just interrupt just a moment?
Mr. Beech, may I just interrupt just a moment? We can't go through everything from 2015 to present.
I'm above that.
Yeah.
I'm just showing you, this is how long it goes.
I understand. I want to be respectful, but I.
I'm just up here pulling my hair and trying to say nothing has been done.
I want to be respectful of your thoughts. I want to be respectful of your thoughts, but we've got a big meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The 2015 minutes talk of the presidential property, a pond, home construction, Hendricks asked questions, Doug Beege stated Hendricks that he really doesn't believe there is a conflict of interest whatsoever. Really? Talks of water flow mathematics used by Hendricks. Beege states, and this is all an MS4 issue. Back to Poland, five more neighbors are questioning what's being allowed to happen. Now, it's only for one-year pond improvement. It's a dream home. D and M attorney talking of sand pit. D and M attorney talking of sand pit, sand mining, mining pit. All the trucking being talked about as Pavey's sand trucks. They're all grandfathered in. Pavey's grandfathered in for what? The same thing that's happening right behind my property? That doesn't need a permit? That makes sense. Let's see. Talk of D and M repairing the roads. That never happened. An industrial operation in a residential area was brought up. If it's, this is nice. If it's commercial, it's mining. This was brought up by Doug Beege himself. Beege, again, Pavey can do it because he is grandfathered in. This is all in the minutes. I could go on and on, but I'm going to keep it short for you. One permit, one year. Mike Bohacek, he made that statement. Here we are, eight years later, we're still talking about it. The next paper that was in there was 12/9/2015 Commissioner Meetings. Again, five neighbors approached commissioners about having an issue in the neighborhood. Bohacek goes back to the Plan Commission to examine the borrow pit. His words. Portion of the zoning ordinance. That's just a word. This was brought up again at the last meeting, the word borrow pit. It's true, the word borrow pits are not in the ordinance, but it's all covered. The actions are covered in the definitions. Look at the definitions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beech.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Mike Poland, wrecking ball of truth.
You're here as a member of the public? This is a public comment?
Well, it's fresh on my mind since he just got up and spoke. I'm also a member of the public. This going on and on and on and on. I mean, two years ago, I came here and said, there's a definition in the Webster's Dictionary of doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. We've had multiple departments look at this, multiple sets of commissioners look at this, separate building commissioners look at this, multiple MS4 administrations looking at this. He doesn't mention if he ever checked with M Shaw to verify that it's a sandmine because he would find out that it's not.
Hey, we're not going to go back and forth.
Okay. There's no zoning violations, period. There's no zoning violations. How many hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money are we going to spend on one individual? We've been to court. We've litigated this two or three times. What was the original court case? We lost. We don't have standing. Your attorney has pleaded with this guy. Bring a private civil nuisance action if you're not happy with what the county has done. We've all bent over backwards for this guy, trying to give him everything that he's asked for. The bottom line is, there's no violations. The one site isn't big enough to require a permit. The other site said storm it most of the time. And the third site is a farmer on a tractor. Come on with this. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of my time. It's a waste of your time. It's a waste of taxpayer money that's being diverted to spend on him. Then how many handicap bathrooms could we have with the six figures we're spending on this? I'm not going to put up with this anymore. So either this commission stops this crap or I'm going to come here like a wrecking ball of truth every single meeting until it stops. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Good morning. My name is Willa Fay Moore. I live at 515 Gray Street, Michigan City. And I do want to speak about voting. The mobile van units, definitely certain areas in Michigan City need to have the mobile van unit, especially with all the construction of the South Shore around Elson. It's hard for the people to get in and out of that area to even try to come and vote. So I just have four locations. The parking lot across the street from the Salvation Army, right on Franklin Street. It's a major area that everybody comes through. You got the Green BP Station. Then you got the Salvation Army across the street on Franklin. There's a vacant parking lot next to Green Service Station. That would be a good location because it's around that Elson area where people can't get in and out. It's near the downtown where people, where the South Shore, all that South Shore stuff is going on. The parking lot at Denny's would be awesome. You got McDonald's and you got Steak and Shake across the street. Got all them restaurants and whatnot where people are eating lunch or whatever, come and vote. East Gate Plaza, of course, Eastport, Michigan Boulevard, across the street from McDonald's, that plaza right across from Michigan Boulevard. And the usual location, Ethan War Bash, where, you know, early voting normally takes place. That parking lot, since all the buildings are closed now, that parking lot should be a good location for the mobile van unit for get people out to vote. And then we need to be advertised in advance where they're going to be and when they're going to be there so people know that's what it's there for. So please make sure you advertise where these units are going to be at. And if we can get the unit going and get it out there, please, we really need people to come out and vote. Local voting time is the most important, I feel, time is for our local candidates. I know President's race is good, but who's running our local government? I've been stressing to my neighbors and my community more and more that they need to vote for our local government. That's who's running your city. That's who's running your county. And that's where you really live every day. So please consider these locations, the parking lot across from the Salvation Army, Denny's, East Gate, and Ethan War Bash. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's a hand raise.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public? I'll do Deb and then there's someone online that wants to speak.
Hi, good morning. Deborah Chubb, 3630 Birchwood, Michigan City. I want to congratulate you for getting the grant to purchase the voter van. I think it's great that you're going, putting in extra time trying to get outside funds to pay for these great services. And like Fay, I want to encourage you to bring the van out as soon as early voting starts to many locations. This is the way to avoid disenfranchisement for elderly people who are shut in. It could also go to senior assisted living facilities where many people there are not able to get to the polls, but could come down to the parking lot to vote and certainly have that right. And I just congratulate you for supporting that. And I hope we can get this going soon and make this happen and set up a system so that we can submit dates and locations and get the calendar set up for this. Thanks.
Thank you. We have someone on Zoom that has their hand raised. Can you go ahead and let that person speak?
Madam President, Alan Stevens, Chairman of La Porte County Republican Party. I wanted to share a couple of my thoughts about the mobile voters unit, if I may. You know, increased voter registration, you know, that's everybody's goal. That's not a Democrat or a Republican or a Libertarian view. That's kind of everybody's goal, as is increased voter turnout. You know, that's not a partisan issue. That's something we can all agree with. And I love the idea that we have the mobile voters unit that we can take to, you know, you look at like the east part of the county, Mill Creek, Fish Lake, where they're a good distance away from any of the established early voting sites. And I agree with Fay and Deb, there are, you know, there are quite a few apartment complexes in different areas of Michigan City that are considerable distances away from the polling locations and don't have easy access to, you know, public transportation to get to the polling location. So, you know, I'm definitely in favor of the mobile voting unit. I guess we have to figure out if this is, you know, strictly to be used for mobile voting, you know, that's what we have to look at the grant. I don't want to see the county in violation if we're using it for other things. If in fact it's going to be used also for voters registration, you know, I would love to see it staffed solely with the employees of the voters registration office. This is what they do every day. They're trained in, you know, how to process the paperwork and they can make sure, because they see a lot of paperwork come through that's not processed properly, that they can make sure that all the paperwork's done properly if in fact that voter registration isn't allowable use. And, you know, if voters registration is found to be an allowable use, we have to have safeguards and assurances that it's not going to be a political tool, that it's going to be bipartisan out of the voters registration office, no campaign signs, no campaign shirts, et cetera. And I think also the, any applications that would possibly be, you know, taken in in the process of this van out, be handed directly into the voter registration office, not, you know, being given to one political party or the other for other partisan purposes. So I want to appreciate, you know, thank you guys for allowing me to speak this morning. And I look forward to listening to the rest of the conversation a little bit later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak? Are there any other members of the public in the room who would like to speak? Hearing none, let's move on. Next, we have department head reports. Do we have any department heads who would like to give a business report?
Good morning, Commissioners. Larry Lovendowski, Facilities Director. I wanted to give you an update on the Rolling Prairie Project. Construction's moving along really well. We got all three buildings up. Right now, the biggest weight right now is getting our electric service brought in and NIPSCO. I did speak with them this week. They're online. Hopefully, within the next three, four weeks, we should have electric in there. And the gas, they're online, they're in the process of getting everything taken care so that they can start running it up to the buildings. We are still waiting on some of the materials. There's some six to eight week lead times still remaining on some of those. So those will be a little bit of a hangup, but at least we'll be able to get in, start finishing some of the stuff inside once we get electric to the buildings. So any questions on that? One other thing I just wanted to let you know is that on behalf of FMEC, I'm going to speak for them right now. We're going to be approaching the council later on this month to find some improvements that the committee there is looking on doing at the fairgrounds. So like I said, later on this month, we'll be going in front of the council. There's two or three items that they're trying to do to get things a little bit more improved so they can start bringing in some, a little bit more people for rentals and stuff out there.
Thank you.
Somebody asked me last week, said, what's going on out the fairgrounds? Said, it was almost dark. It was almost eight o'clock. Said, it looked like somebody was out there cutting the grass. I said, I hope he's not getting time and a half. I said, no, he's sorry. That's Larry Lovendowski. He's the boss. He's out there at eight o'clock at night cutting the grass.
Yeah, it's got to get done. It's got to get done, so.
Good man.
Thank you, Larry. You've done a great job out there. Any other department heads?
Good morning. Good morning.
Mandaliner's Health Department. Quickly about COVID vaccine, new booster is out, bivalent vaccine. It's available by both Pfizer and Moderna. We do have that in our clinic now. We still have our clinics on Wednesdays on the fourth floor. You do need to make an appointment right now. Yeah, it's 18 and older, excuse me, 12 and older that can do the booster, bivalent booster. And we currently carry the Moderna only. We're not going to carry Pfizer. Pfizer is available in all of the pharmacies surrounding us. And so it doesn't make sense for us to carry both. There's a lot of people who want specifically Moderna because that's what they started with and they want to stick with. So that's our largest request. So that's what we're going to continue to carry. We received a large amount of grant money. And one of the things that we're able to do with that is purchase a trailer. And that's something that we would like to do. We talked before and got permission before to purchase a van as to use as a mobile clinic to get us out in the county. And after that happened, those completely dried up. They've been very difficult to find and to be able to get to outfit it how we would need it. We were able to find a company that a number of other counties in Indiana and other cities that have used to build first responder trailers. They do only EMA, fire departments, city police officers, counties and health departments throughout everywhere. So this is what we would like to do. Again, we have grant money to cover the entire cost of that trailer. That will get us out in the county. We can drop it out in the county, have a fully operational medical unit, emergency response command center, whatever it is we need to do that is completely self-sufficient. But to be able to do that, I do realize that that is something that has to be planted and insured by the county. So I would ask permission for us to be able to move forward. Getting that process started is a six-month build time. That's why I'd like to get it started earlier than later, if that's possible.
Director Lanners, you're saying that all of that is going to be covered by the grant money you've received?
Yes.
Then I would make a motion to allow Director Lanners to proceed.
Yeah, I'd second the motion and forget you'll need insurance and gas and stuff like that. So if you got the money for that, that's a great idea. I'd second the motion.
So we have a motion, a second to permit Amanda and the Health Department to proceed with the purchase of the mobile unit and the trailer? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I'm closest. Jeremy Sveiki from the Parks Department. I just wanted to update everyone and let everybody know that Seabird Woods County Park, our new park, newest park is now open. Opened that, I think, a week and a half or so ago. And that's up on 925 North, 3608 West, 925 North. We're going to have a grand opening on the 24th, Saturday, the 24th, at 10 o'clock. Have a D and R Nature Preserve employee there giving a hike and doing some history on the property. I'll be there doing some history on the property and stuff. So come out and join us. And I also wanted to thank all that came out to the Bloom, the dedication of the playground, ribbon cutting of the playground. It was a really nice, really nice facility. And to see the number of people, kids using that has been really amazing. We do have two other, or three other playgrounds going in hopefully this fall, as long as everything lines up with the suppliers and installers. Two new ones at Creek Ridge and one new one at Red Mill. Thanks to the county commissioners and council for approving part of the money and the healthcare foundation, the rest of the money, so.
So Jeremy, Bloom Park is truly amazing. And the other amazing thing that we need to mention is that your own staff built the bathroom, the restroom. And it's just lovely. So really great, great work to save money and watch out for.
We do that as much as we can. And if you've been to Lur lately, we did the same thing. We used, you know, our staff built the restroom. Building trades helped build the shelter. You know, we try to do that as much as we can to save money and get these projects done and, you know.
Thank you.
Really nice, they're not just a bathroom or a shelter. They're really nice structures for county parks, so.
Well, thanks to the trades for that help as well.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. We have someone online, so do you want to come up now or? If you'd like. If you'd like, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Rob Savie, Larry Butcher, uh, from EMA. Um, we're here to talk about, I, I know, uh, our Rave contract had run out. Um, just to give you a little history, um, it's a, was a five-year contract and the actual invoice for the renewal went to, uh, an ex-employee. And so the invoice was kind of out there in cyberspace in an email. We didn't know it was due until like a week before it was due. So we're kind, we're kind of under the gun here. Um, I know, uh, we've talked to the company and, and they understand what happened. And they said it happens all the time that, you know, they, with employee turnover and stuff, that's, things get lost. And anyway, um, I know we were asked to come up with some, uh, uh, plans on utilization on our, our Rave, which is part of the, um, when you go to the county website, you go down, it says Rave. You sign up for getting alerts and that goes to the Smart 911. So the, um, what happens is when you, the public, when they sign up for that, they can sign up for, um, whatever kind of alert they want to get. If it's, um, if they want to get everything, if they want to get just weather, road closures, that type of thing. Um, so they can sign up on the, the, the website. That's the public side. The other side is we have the Rave, um, which the public side is the, uh, it'll go to the Smart 911, um, which is actually, it's a national, um, database that's, you can go anywhere in the country if, if they have, have that Smart 911. If they have it on their phone, if there's an app you can download, it'll automatically pop up if there's any kind of a warning or something that's in that area. So, which is kind of nice, um.
So Rob, may I ask a question? The Smart 911 separate from Rave or are they merged?
They're merged.
Okay.
Um, the, the Smart 911 is the public side of it. And that, that's like, you can sign up anywhere for that, but it's integrated in with our Rave system so that, um, they can pick like, you can pick like what township. If there's a, you know, a sp, specific incident, you know, say a road closure or something, you can map that out and then go out and just go to that township or whatever. Um, you can do everything or as little as that. It's, it's, you know, the user, um, when they sign up can do whatever they want. It's as much or as little as you want to do. But like I said, it's, it is a national database. It'll go through any, anywhere in the country. So if you're, you know, traveling, I, I know, uh, they use it in the next two counties west of us. So if you're going over there, um, you'll get alerts, you know, on your phone from them as well.
A couple of things that, uh, I think I want to bring to the Commissioners' attention. Uh, we know we've had this raid for some time and we know that COVID came in and kind of took over, uh, and kind of took the space of us implementing this program like it should have been implemented. Needless to say, now, um, we're going to make it a, a focus of ours to use this product as best we can uh, because the, the things that it can do is just amazing. Uh, but one of the things that I, I think, um, needs to come out of this is right away is we need a committee, uh, because this thing is so complex. Uh, I would like the commission, from the Commissioners, to, to have a committee. Uh, on that committee, I'd like to see myself, uh, Rob. I'd like to, and I haven't spoke with Ms. Houston yet, someone from the 911 center. Um, uh, Ms. Bailey, I spoke with her, um, who's computer sharp. You know, you need some people that have all kinds of, uh, skills. And of course Darlene, uh, and anybody else you guys think that, that we should have. But, uh, having a com, uh, uh, a, a committee, uh, put together that's going to make sure that this serves the, uh, the county as best we can, is, I think is important. Uh, and also training, uh, training is just absolutely huge. Uh, and Diane was another one that's, uh, on the committee as well. Uh, she tried to sneak through there, but, uh, she didn't want to remind me. Um, so I don't want you guys to think that we're just going to throw this thing together, uh, this time. Uh, hopefully we can build a team, uh, and make it a, a, a great product, uh, product. Because some of the big, uh, you know, Notre Dame, Ball State, Purdue, uh, counties on, uh, either side of us use it. So I think, I think it's something that, uh, that's worth us doing five years for. And I think it'll, it'll be, uh, a good asset for us.
Right. Yeah, and also just to, like, you know, I mean, even if we decide not to do this, we, we still should have some kind of a, um, alerting system, uh, because this is all tied in through the National Weather Service. And, uh, right now, it, it's called iPaws. So if, if there's a tornado that's spotted, let's say an officer in, in La Porte County spots a tornado, um, if your i, iPaws trained, you can go and that'll send it out to the news media, you know, like the television stations and everything. So it, it's all connected. It, it's like a big, huge network, you know, through FEMA and everything. So, you know, it, if, if we just decide to get rid of this plan or whatever, we still would have to go to somewhere else. And there are other vendors out there and they're basically, they'll do the same thing. It's just, you know, they might have a couple of things here that are better or, you know, than the one we're using now, but it's, you know, they all cost about the same, so. Um, yeah, it's, it's really important that we, we keep this. And, you know, I, like Larry said, I think we, we should go with a five-year contract. For one, it's, it's quite cost-saving and.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it's about fifteen thousand to save instead of going yearly contract, so.
Thank you.
That was the last one that we had, was a five-year contract.
Right. I, I'm a big believer in the Rave. I have it in my, uh, because I'm an employee at Purdue. So, um, and does everyone who has a county phone, uh, uh, paid for by the county, do they have Rave on their phone or is that a requirement?
You know, I can remember, uh, Mr. Morzinski making it a requirement for, uh, new people coming in. Uh, and he did suggest kind of like we did with the mask, not a mandate, but a strong suggestion. And I think we got, um, some considerable amount of people signed up. But I think if we, we, we start to use it and use it correctly and get other people involved in the county, I think it'd be, I think it'd be a, it'll take off and be a great product.
Yeah, it's a great safety tool, uh, to be honest, from, uh, we had that bad, uh, storm last week and wherever you were in the county, the skies were dark. And there, there were several warnings that came through on what was happening. So that was.
So I know on the, the Smart 911, I, I, I downloaded on my phone. I've got the app. Um, I got every National Weather Service, every time they pushed out a warning, it came right through, through my phone. It was incident, so.
That's great.
So you kind of like the, uh, what is it, lost child alert they got yesterday?
Yeah.
Did you guys get that? So it'd be the same, it'd be the same way, every phone in the, every phone will get it.
Yeah, that's all tied into that big network, so.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, renew this contract for five years.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Sure, um, I know I heard you wanted to do a committee as well. Do, do we need to renew this today before possible committee would get together for some other options or?
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a, there's a list, uh, there's a list of options. Uh, I think we should go ahead, uh, and renew this today. Uh, I don't think that, because what we have right now, we could use. So, um, some of the important things we can use right now, and Rob knows how to use it. We just need to get, uh, some people from the center like Diane. Uh, say you guys want to close the county. That, that text can come, that, uh, entry can come from Diane. Uh, it takes her thirty seconds, you know? So we need the buy-in of other department heads.
Recommend that, um, President Matthias and you talk about the committee.
Okay.
Afterward, but yeah, we, we need to renew the contract for, for sure.
Okay. So is that committee list okay with you guys or?
Yeah, I, I think the committee is a great idea because, uh, buying a system and then not marketing it hard and, and making sure we have lots of people trained to use it correctly. Um, it could be a great safety tool, but if it's not, if people don't know about it, they.
Exactly.
You know, it's, it's a waste.
Diane, uh, I mean, Darlene's department is printing flyers and cards.
Great.
As we speak, so.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to, um, approve the contract renewal. Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew the Rave contract, um, and accepting your plan as well on, uh, ways to, um, improve and integrate, including the committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have, uh, someone on the line, Seth. Can you, um, the person with the hand raised?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Heather Stevens, um, La Porte County Clerk. Sorry for not being there. I'm actually in Fort Wayne at a conference. Um, I am asking again for the use of one of the small offices over in Michigan City. Um, I need to be there. I have, I have about, I have a staff of roughly fifteen over there. And I, I need to be, I need somewhere to be. I need somewhere that I can work. I can, I can meet with my staff. I can discipline. I can interview.
Thank, thank you, Clerk Stevens. I, I, I met with Clerk Stevens earlier, uh, last week over at Michigan City, uh, in one of the, uh, in one of the rooms. Uh, I met with her as well as Judge, uh, Judge Stahlbrink. And, uh, Judge Stahlbrink conveyed to me that all the, all the, all four of the judges or, I guess, three judges and magistrate who are over there, um, uh, Judge Os, uh, Judge Freeman, as well as, uh, Link. Um, and obviously Judge Stahlbrink are all in favor of, uh, that space being used, uh, by the clerk there. They'd like to see the clerk there more often. So I would make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the clerk, uh, having an office, uh, in Michigan City in that, uh, in that, uh, room that we met in that Judge Stahlbrink and the other judges are comfortable with.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, space change for the clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Lynn?
Maybe I'll be last, but not least. Um, I have some information for you. May I?
We always said you're the last person we want to see.
Thank you.
But I won't see you. Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Okay, what I've just given you, Lynn, I'm sorry, Lynn Swanson, La Porte County Coroner. What I've just given you are last year's and so far this year's numbers, um, for matters of deaths. Um, I've highlighted eight twenty-six of twenty twenty-one. If you'll compare that to the numbers on the single page for eight thirty-one, you can see we're running pretty close to where we were last year. Um, although at this point suicides are down a little bit, um, homicides are down a little bit. If you'll continue to look on twenty twenty-one, this month starts kind of a tick up. Uh, during the holidays, we see a lot more suicides, a lot more homicide. Um, and unfortunately, a lot more overdoses, which, um, overdoses this year again are extremely high. I'm not exactly sure what to attribute that to. You know, I know the Drug Task Force is out, Sheriff's Department's out, La Porte City is out making arrests. But the drugs just seem to keep coming. The newest thing now is, uh, rainbow fentanyl. It's coming out. It looks like, um, you know, little pieces of colorful candy. So it's something for people to be aware of, um, you know, with Halloween coming up soon. Have all your stuff checked before you let your kids eat any of it. Um, so far this year, we've responded to two hundred and seventeen deaths. This time last year was two nineteen. So we're kind of on track for the same. It would be nice, I guess, if you have to find a nice in it, to keep the numbers about the same instead of rising, but I don't see that this year. Um, I see the numbers going up again. Um, so that's about it on that. I just wanted to let you know about these numbers, which are a preface to why I'm coming to you later in the meeting.
Since you're here, why don't we go ahead and, uh, take, unless someone objects, take your appropriations request?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, that was a motion to let her just go ahead and do her.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, what I was asking was, uh, to approach the council for additional appropriations for my professional services account, which is what I pay my deputies out of. Um, last year I paid out a total of forty-nine thousand dollars. My budget was only thirty. And I currently, um, after this month's payroll for them, have only twenty-three hundred dollars left. And like I said, with the numbers rising, I'm going to need the money. Um, and also to, um, travel to Rensselaer for an entomology, uh, seminar given by Dr. Haskell. Myself and two of my deputies would be attending that. And for anybody who doesn't know what that is, it's the study of bugs. Doesn't sound very interesting, but it's kind of cool, really.
All right, um, so, um, I would entertain a motion to, um, uh, approve the coroner going for, uh, additional funds.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Lynn, if you, if you, uh, anybody that's been paying attention, fentanyl coming across our open border. Yeah, by the tons.
Yeah.
Killing a lot of people, unsuspecting people, people that see, it's a, um, an overdose that it was, I don't know, people taking drugs, you can't really say that it was not expected.
Right. They call it an accidental death, which I'm not quite sure how that ever came about because how do you accidentally overdose on something you know that could kill you?
Accidentally took drugs.
Yeah, right.
But, and what I can't believe, it, I just, I don't know why I never knew this, is that your position is part-time with, with all this going on and you're part-time.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
I know. I'm also speaking to the council about.
I hope they're paying attention.
I hope they are too, because this is definitely no longer a part-time.
No, it is not.
With part-time pay. Um, I will tell you, about ninety-nine percent of the toxicology studies that we're getting back right now, um, include fentanyl. And it's showing up, um, in marijuana. I may have something come back that only has marijuana and, um, cotton tea, you know, nicotine, but then it's also got fentanyl. So they're putting fentanyl even into the marijuana. They're pressing it into pills. Um, I mean, it's, it's bad. It's really bad. Like I said, ninety-nine percent, I can almost guarantee when I send one in, it's going to come back with fentanyl.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Lynn. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Well, I wasn't gonna, it's been a long meeting, but I figured there's a few things I want to update you on. Nicole Messager, MS Four Director, um, I wanted to let you know that about, a little less than two weeks ago, we held a workshop here in this room, um, for local contractors, other MS fours to, um, understand the new permit that we're in. So we're at the beginning of a new five-year permit cycle. We have a lot of work to do, but we were able to educate twenty-three, um, mostly builders, um, on what they need to do to stay in compliance with the permit requirements. So that was good. We still have a long way to go. But, um, so we're moving into some of the other requirements that we have. I just received this morning the new timeline from the state as far as, you know, what, how many days we have to get each thing done. And, um, there's some looming deadlines. So, um, one of my most important things right now is to sort of tighten up our process with the building permits. So I'm facilitating a workshop with the building permit, uh, the building department's attorney, our attorney, and just make sure that we're all, um, on the same page with that. So that's coming up in a couple of weeks. And then we need to move into characterizing our water quality in the county. So looking at where all of our outfalls are and what's going into them and then starting to prioritize, um, the work that we do in those areas of the county so that we're, because ultimately this project, this, this permit is all about keeping our water clean, right? So that's what we have to do. So we have to kind of look at, um, our target, you know, target pollutants and, and how much we want to work in those areas. So, um, yeah, that's it. Just wanted to keep you, keep you posted on what we're doing. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Okay, let's move on. Moving on to requests, um, EMS consider permission to retain trade-in ambulance and permission to approach the council regarding funding related to the holdback trade.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Been asked over the last, uh, few years by the county council about holding back a trade-in ambulance. And, uh, usually by the time we get to that point, those ambulances are usually on the verge of either having an engine blow or a transmission go out, or they're not really worthy of, of holding back. So with this next one coming up, we're finally at a point where the vehicle we're getting ready to trade in is halfway stable. And I could see it being around for another year or so. So now would be a good opportunity to, to see if we could hold back one of the trade-ins. So this morning I'm asking permission, uh, for, actually approval for you or from you to hold back a trade-in, add another vehicle to our fleet, and permission to approach the council for the funding that'd be required for it.
Most do approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request, the permission, uh, to retain the trade-in and permission to approach the council regarding funding, uh, in regards to the trade-in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next on the agenda, consider permission to approach the council for funding on repairs to the air conditioning unit at Red Mill Park.
Hi. One of the air conditioning units, we have several out there, but this one went down.
One of the air conditioning units, we have several out there, but this one went down, the condenser went out, and the three online had a hole in it. So it's 20-some years old, it's time to replace. This would be enough to exceed $5,000 to replace.
Most to approve the request, go to the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next request we have is from probation, Chief Probation Officer Steve Iraik to travel to a conference for pre-trial service agencies, September 18th through the 21st. All those in favor?
Motion to approve.
Wait, sorry, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay. Our next request is the property, excess property request, Commissioner Rosinski. You mentioned.
Yeah, we, what's happened is, over the years, we've ended up with some pieces of property, mostly very small, little slivers here and there that we did even, the company, the county has either required, acquired by taxes not being paid, or whatever. And in the city of Michigan City, when the grass grows up, vector control goes out and cuts the grass, no matter how small it is, and then they charge us 65 bucks every time. So what I'd like to do is have this reviewed by our real estate professional to vacate this property back to Michigan City. I'd like, like to have our attorney contact our professional real estate person, and I think we've, we've got a pretty good list of it already of what it is.
And if you would, if the motion would indicate it's county-wide, I mean, there are a number of parcels that you've identified, Commissioner Rosinski, and what this would do, if you're interested in moving forward with a deed sale auction for unloading, these are a lot of small excess or isolated properties. SRI is the recommended firm by our, our special counsel for property sales. SRI does deed sale auctions, they're, these are county-owned properties, the buyer is buying a quitclaim deed, as Commissioner said, versus a not, a tax sale certificate. SRI would handle the entire project. They get, they would essentially help unload a lot of these excess or isolated parcels. They charge something like 15% of gross bid price, and, and so he's recommended SRI. So what I'd like is authority from you all to bring you back a proposal from SRI to conduct a deed sale auction for these properties. I mean, there are literally hundreds of properties that Commissioner Rosinski was able to find on this list, and they're countywide. And so I'd, I'd like to have authority, if we could, from you all to come back with a proposal from SRI. Make a motion to grant that authority.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I, I've been working on some of this these past two weeks. There's a gentleman on, on Sound Off recently who brought up a good point of a couple of properties. Some of these are small, like, there's like a strip, for example, in Michigan City that's right next to a church up there, that's kind of a triangular piece of property. There's no way anybody could, we could build with it or do anything with it, there's no right-of-way that we needed for or anything else, so that would be a property we definitely want to get rid of. Considering some of the history around some of the property stuff, I'd, I'd be curious to see this list before we go ahead and approve it. I know, I know we have quite a few properties that, that, that we should cut loose, but I haven't been presented with whatever list we're going to be looking at here today, so.
I, I don't think we have a list.
It's an attachment to the email I sent all three of you on Friday at 5:12. So maybe check your, and I'll resend it. And you're right, it's up to the vendor to go through and call out of here those properties that are owned and necessary by the county versus those that are small, excess, and isolated. And, but, but certainly any proposal we come back to you with would have to list that these are excess, isolated, or small properties that you all want to get rid of and, and make sure that we yield that back to the management of the county.
Sure, because some, some of the projects that, that we sent an email, one of them was the Eighth Street property. One of them is the home we just bought next to the ambulance base that we're gonna renovate. So they, we need an expert to go through and call them out and find out, what do we have? You know, I mean, if it's something that's a couple acres, well, that's a different story, but, or if it's something we have a building on, but these little strips of land here and there, you can put, get them back on the tax rolls.
And I would assure you that before there's any sale authorized, we need to come to you all with the full and complete list and inventory of the properties.
So the motion is to allow the, the county to begin to work with this vendor so they can do the.
That's right, to get a proposal so that they can conduct a deed sale auction of itemized properties that you all have indicated you want on that particular auction.
Would, would it make sense to call out a few of these that we know already before we send it to them, such as, such as the EMS-based property we just purchased?
Sure. I mean.
Eighth Street property.
Take a look, and I, again, I'm rescinding the list here. You'll see a number of these are, are obviously properties that, that you have with, with current use, but I'm, I'm more than happy to resend the list to all.
I started looking some of them up on Beacon, that's how I found out about those two and, and some others there, but he said, there's like a couple pages of, very lengthy. I'd be working on that till the end of the year. So we'll have the experts, you know, and give us a list and see what they recommend, so.
We have a motion to begin the process. Do we have a second?
No, not, not at this time, not, not without having a, a more clean and condensed list to forward.
All right, I'm gonna second the motion so we can begin the process of getting rid of excess property and bringing more tax dollars in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed, nay. So the motion is carried. Next, we have a presentation from American Fidelity, who's asked to do a brief presentation on their services.
Thank you. My name is Brent Rempe with American Fidelity, and I've got some papers here for you, if I can hand it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Over the past, seems like a couple of years now, we've begun working with Monique and the HR department, also Joe, on just learning more about Lepore County and ways that American Fidelity might be able to help. I gave kind of a list here on kind of what we've discovered over these past handful of meetings that we've had, and we've, we feel like we've come to a nice solution that would benefit the county, the employees, that would save the employees' money, benefit HR as far as just assisting in process, benefit auditor and payroll as far as just daily tasks and bill pay because of the way American Fidelity's set up. So number one here, we listed kind of why partner with American Fidelity. Obviously, first and foremost, when you're looking at employee benefits and you're looking at how benefits are communicated, it's very important to have synergy in that. American Fidelity is a partner of your, your broker, General Insurance Services, GIS, and work closely with them on just surrounding, you know, Lepore, City of Lepore, Michigan City, Porter County, Lepore Schools, and, and do this with, with, with GIS in efforts to streamline communication for the employees and for the benefit of the employees to better understand the great benefits that Lepore County is providing. Throughout this process, we'll assist with, you know, the benefit, the enrolling of the benefits in the American Fidelity enrollment system. We'll support HR in that effort, also support payroll, because the, the payroll system that Lepore County currently uses is a LOAWE payroll system. American Fidelity is a partner of LOAWE payroll system, and so what that means is that allows us to transmit election, elected data to the payroll system, and that frees the payroll personnel from actually having to key in any type of benefit changes that happen throughout the plan year. So that's gonna be a tremendous help and savings for them as far as, as far as getting changes taken care of. There's a couple other pieces that American Fidelity assists with, like reimbursement accounts and voluntary benefits. Currently, the county offers health savings accounts and flexible spending accounts through a couple different vendors. The proposal is that American Fidelity could help to streamline those reimbursement accounts as well. There's a lot of employees, when it comes to health savings accounts, that because there's an action that they have to take to actually go, go and get the health savings account signed up for, and then get the information back to HR, that sometimes those don't always happen. And so employees are missing out on the opportunity to utilize those types of programs. So American Fidelity would help to just be a provider for that. They can make the election on the spot and just make that whole process much cleaner and easier for them. As far as working with the employees, we, for all of our, you know, for GIS and for all of our clients, really, we work directly with HR to actually, to give employees a personalized enrollment experience. And these are things that we've talked about as well, where, you know, having someone to sit with an employee and explain the difference between coverage, coverage options that are available and benefit options that are available, and help make sure that they understand what they're electing and, and feel confident and comfortable about, about what they're doing. So that's, that would be how American Fidelity would be helping as well. With the new system coming in from American Fidelity, we call that system AF Enroll, that would replace the current system that's being used by what's called EAS enrollment system. There's a $12,000, approximate $12,000 savings to the county that's currently being used in the EAS enrollment system, and that will, that, that cost will be reduced to zero with American Fidelity. So all in all, as far as transitioning, I, I made a few handful of bullet points that you can, you can read through as well, but just assisting the county with, with open enrollment, enrollment system, assisting the county with voluntary benefits. We've, we've done an analysis on current benefits that are being offered. Everything that's being offered today will, will be able to remain being offered, but there will be some new items for the employees that the county can use for recruiting, retention, things like long-term disability coverage that's not currently being offered, individual cancer coverage, and term and whole life plans for the employees to elect and have just a little more robust coverage. Our account management team will work with HR as far as, and, and GIS to, to actually schedule open enrollment, to meet with employees and, and be here year-round, so you'll see a lot more of a robust team of people here to help with, with employees in the elections. I put down here other just administrative services, things like Section 125 compliance, that's needed for, you know, any time a pre-tax benefits are being offered, those are things that we can help the county manage as well, along with the health savings and flexible spending accounts that I've mentioned. And then the final point there is just being, you know, being more present for HR, for the county with, with employee benefits. So that means new hires, that means life events, so just being active throughout the year to assist, to assist the county. And so requesting today, just, you know, final blessing and approval that we can start this process and get everything rolling for this year's open enrollment.
Do we have a, do we have a contract, or how is this?
There is only a couple, there's no contract on this. There will be a, a couple of documents that'll need to be signed. One is, just allows us to offer our voluntary benefits, and the other one is, allows us to offer the reimbursement accounts and the, the enrollment system and things like that. But there's no cost to the county in, in, in these, in, in working with American Fidelity, and, and no contract as far as, as far as doing that, so.
If, if you could make approval subject to attorney review of the documents, that would be helpful.
That would be great.
Wonderful.
I would make that motion. I would make that motion, thank you. We, we've spent quite a bit of time working with that, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve contract review and execution after our attorney takes a look by American Fidelity for our employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and I'll give that to you. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we are going, going to move to old business. Consider, consider establishing a process for use of the mobile voter van. The van acquired to promote voter access for registration, absentee voting applications, and early voting for use in various locations and events contingent on availability of deputy registrars, county employees representing both political parties. So this has come up, we brought this up at our previous meeting and had some discussion. It was then referred to the Lepore County Election Board for their discussion and review. And I think we want to make some, take some action today to decide, are we going to have the voting van scheduled out of the commissioner's office so that we can get it posted on the website and all of that? Or is it being left with voter registration? So I don't know if, who wants to discuss this.
I, I think it's important that we leave it with voter registration. I, I see no reason why we can't make suggestions to the, to voter registration and the election board, you know, on, on where to send it to make sure it's being utilized properly. But I think, given the, given the spirit of the grant that was awarded and that, that was fought so hard for by, by the election board president Chuck Larson, by election board vice president Pichardo, Kurt, sorry, Nelson, you know, leaving that in their hands, because ultimately, the, the election, election integrity is, falls on the clerk and the election board. And I don't think, I don't think any of us want to muddy those waters. I think we'd like to keep that clear. Again, I don't think there's anything wrong with us giving suggestions to, to them on where to utilize it and, and how to utilize it to make sure it gets utilized fully, but, you know, taking control of it, I think is just a step too far.
So I guess I would weigh in, in absolute disagreement of your position, Commissioner Haney. The van was acquired last September, so that was September 2021, and I've been to almost every festival and occasion event in the county over the last year, and I haven't seen it anywhere. I understand it might have been at Hannafest a year ago, but it was not at Hannafest this year, and my concern is that it was with voter registration for a year, and it basically sat at the highway department not being used. And so that's, to me, that's a waste of taxpayer resources. I sent an email on July 28th to voter registration to ask, what's the process? How do we schedule this thing? You know, what, and Heather jumped in and said, they passed it to Heather, our clerk, and she jumped in and said, you know, she would work with voter registration to get a process developed. To my knowledge, no process has been developed. We have had lots of fairs and festivals, there's many more coming in the next two months, and there is no process for voter, the voter van to be out there. And that's a concern for me, and it's not, this is not a partisan issue. I don't care what party anybody is, that does not matter. If you are a party or you're not in a party, but you want to vote, you should be able to vote, and you should be able to register easily, it should be accessible, it should be in the, you know, Ms. Moore mentioned, the Denny's parking lot. It should be in the Kroger's parking lot, it should be in the Myers parking lot, it should be wherever we can get a bipartisan team. We have trained poll watchers, poll workers who know how to register voters. You go online in your own home and you register voters, so we could have an iPad on site so we can register people. It is an American privilege that people all around, across the world wish that they could vote like we do in our democracy. And to not make that available, the whole point of getting the, the van, we wrote a grant, it was $67,000 of taxpayer support that came back to this county for us to be able to help people, you know, the assisted living places, put the voter van in the parking lot so that our seniors can get an application to, for absentee voting mailed to their, and the application mailed to their, or the ballot mailed to their homes. To me, this is, this is, this is a simple solution, to have it scheduled out of the commissioner's office. We have the staff who know, understands how the, the county is organized. People call the commissioner's office, we're kind of like the hub, where everyone that needs information calls the commissioner's office, and then Diane does a great job of, disseminating information out. So while our voter registration team is very skilled, they've got a focus of the tasks that they have to do, and this would be an addition to them. If they can help us staff it, that's terrific. I talked about using flex time. Flex time is not comp times, because we don't have comp time for those employees, but they could flex their schedules so that if they're working an event on a Saturday, they, they count Monday as their Sunday, Monday weekend, so that we can accommodate festivals and events that are after work hours or, or over the weekends. So I think that we, we can get a schedule put together, we can then have the commissioner's office posted the schedule of where the van will be on the website. It's easy, it's not, it's, this is not a partisan issue, this is a, let's help people issue. So that's my position.
Yeah, we talked about this in our last meeting, and it was brought up that the van had an issue, that the battery was dead all the time, and that it was parked at the highway department. So I called the highway department, and they said, yeah, it's parked out here. I said, well, what did you find out was the problem with the battery? We didn't even know it had a problem with the battery. Nobody ever mentioned that to them, that there was a problem with the battery. They figured out what it was. It's a separate battery for the lift gate on the back, has an off and on switch, it was left on, drained the battery. They've got that fixed. New battery is expensive, but we, we have the new battery. And you're right, issue like that, and the fact that it's been sitting around not being used at all, I, I want to see it used. I want to see it used at all, but I, I really like Mrs. Moore's suggestions here, at Salvation Army on Franklin Street, Denny's, East Gate Plaza, Eighth and Wabash, these are all great places. And as people have places like that, or festivals, if they would recommend that to us through our office, and then we would know where it's going, and gonna have people who are trained to do whatever it is, whether it be voting or registering people from, actually, I say both parties, if, if the libertarians want to get involved, that's, that's fine too, as long as. I say both parties. If, if the libertarians want to get involved, there's, that's fine too, as long as it's done properly. Vetted through our office, we'll need to have, and I've asked before, bring the keys to that van to the office here and we will get a list, a sign out list, who's got it. And it's, it's registered to the commissioners. It's insured through the commissioners. We will be assigned through the commissioners. We'll make sure that it's done properly and with, uh, equality. And every place that requests it, we'll make sure that we can get somebody to man it and have it be there. I think it's a great idea. Commissioner Haney even volunteered to use his personal credit card to fill it up with gas. What else do we need? We got insurance. We got gas. We got the battery fixed. We get people to, uh, man it. We just need, it's like suggestions from Mrs. Moore of, of where to put it. And let's, uh, let's get out. So that would be my motion is that this be vetted through the commissioner's office. We'll make, make sure where it's going. Um, so whoever has the keys, uh, they need to bring them. So we know where the van is at and make sure that it doesn't get locked in over the weekends so we can access it. That's my motion.
So before we, we, uh, go for a second, um, there, there are some people and I see a member of the, um, election board is here and some other people. If there's anyone, because we're going to take a, um, a vote, if anyone would like to speak, I'd open the floor. I'm sorry?
Yeah. Thank you, commissioners. I did want to speak about this. Uh, I totally agree. And this is, I'm Nelson Pichardo, vice president of the LaPorte County Election Board. Totally agree with Commissioners Mozinski and Matias. The whole, and, and it keeps, everyone keeps bringing up the purpose of the grant. And the purpose of the grant is to use and utilize this as a tool. And as it, as has, it's been mentioned, it hasn't been. And I think this comes down to an issue of, of resources and division of labor, really. The, the commissioners have the ability to, to be able to allow the county to use it more appropriately than, than the clerk's office, I believe, and the registrar's office. They have more resources to be able to address some of the issues that sometimes the van has, as Commissioner Mozinski brought up. It, it, it just makes sense, uh, to me. Uh, and the facts show it as well. Clearly it hasn't been utilized as, uh, as we want. And it's time to check, try something else. And if the commissioners, I, I actually thank the commissioners for bringing this up because if it wasn't brought up by the commissioners, we probably would still not be able to use it as, as it should be used. There are a couple of things that I would like to see as, as a member of the election board. And one of those is, uh, to make sure that the county party heads, um, that they have a say in who's, uh, using it and who's, who's on the van to register individuals. Because as you all know, a lot of times those are the individuals who appoint lists and give the list to the clerks in order to be able to have volunteers. Sometimes I, I believe the registrar's office won't be able to, to, uh, man the, the unit. And so bringing those folks in, uh, to give a list as to who would be appropriate under, you know, voter registration to, to register folks, I think that would be appropriate. And I think that would be something under, you know, consideration as to how to, this process would play out is to make sure that they have a say in who, who is allowed to check it out or who is allowed to register folks. You know, the, the election board spoke about this and we discussed it at our last meeting. And, you know, my position, I, I know, I know Heather's here and I think Chuck Waterston, the president, he has a statement that, that Heather's going to read, I believe. But my position is we need to use this thing. Uh, it's just sitting there and I, and you know, again, it's, it, it should be used everywhere and it hasn't been. And we got to try something else. And I, I believe that there is an efficient and productive way of doing that. And I think the commissioners have the ability to do that. And if that's the case, more power to you guys. And I hope that we can work together in order to, uh, help you in any way that we can as the election board to pursue the, the purpose of the grant. Uh, you know, part of the, 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 part of the language that the grant spoke about was safe elections. And I, I know that might be a concern for some of the other folks because it was brought up at the election board that somehow giving the van to the commissioners would not make elections safe. I don't, I don't really know the argument. They, they might bring it up. But each of you took an oath when you became commissioners and you have to follow laws and you have to make sure that you do the things appropriately. And amongst those is election laws, right? And so if, if the, the van is in your, in your possession or if you have purview of how it's supposed to be used, elections are still going to be safe. I don't understand how that's not going to be something that, that goes to the wayside. You guys all took an oath to uphold laws and there are, um, election laws that you have to uphold. And if the election van is in your possession, I know that all laws are going to be followed. If there are any questions, the election board, the clerk's office, we're all here to help and to make sure that everything is done appropriately. But ultimately, we want to see the thing get used. And I think that's what, what it comes down to. The resources and the, 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 the amount of time that you guys can dedicate to it, I think it's, it's, uh, appropriate. And I would support the, um, the request that Matias, Commissioner Matias and Commissioner Mozinski have to allow the commissioners to, uh, take control of van and have the keys and effectuate a plan in order to allow the public to use it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Good morning. Jim Kimmel, 1015 Southwestwood. Uh, I could not agree with Ricardo anymore, but I think it's time that we start thinking outside the box. I'm sitting back here thinking of ways that this can be utilized. We've got seven high schools in LaPorte County, for example. I'm sure there's not a principal at any one of those high schools that would have an objection to that vehicle being at a high school on a specific day for a specific time to allow the students, number one, to go out and register if they haven't. And number two, then when, when open voting is, is there, put that van back there and let our high school kid. We need to get the youth of America involved. And what better tool than to make it so accessible to them, they don't have an excuse. I talked to some students back when I was a county chair down in LaCrosse. And they said, it's hard for us to get up to LaPorte to vote. Well, we partially solved that by putting early voting in Wantagh, which was a great idea. But how happy would they be if we had the voter van in the city of LaCrosse, right outside LaCrosse High School, so those kids could go vote? This is a no-brainer. And I, I, I think what we need to do is get both county chairs involved in this. Alan Stevens and Dr. Cora, have them develop a list of volunteers. Ms. Stevens would have to train them to make sure they're properly trained to run that thing, whether it be for voter registration or the vote. We got to work on this thing collectively to make sure that LaPorte County is successful in what we're doing. And this bickering back and forth about where it's going to be kept or who's going to have the control of the keys. It belongs to the commissioners. It's titled the commissioners. Let them do it, but we need to have efforts between the commissioner's office and the clerk's office to make sure when that thing rolls out, we've got somebody trained to drive it. And we've got people in there that are trained to do what they have to do properly and legally. So I, I think it's time we get it out of mothballs wherever, that thing's a beautiful piece of equipment. Well, let's put it out there. These festivals, it should be out there. I don't care if you put it down at the Burger King and Wantagh on Highway 30. People driving by are going to see that. They may stir up their own county to get what we've got here in LaPorte County. Let, let's use the tools that we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other member of the public wish to speak?
Tim Stables, uh, 1501 Michigan Avenue, LaPorte County Attorney. Listen, um, I agree with everyone here that from what we're hearing, it sounds like the van is not adequately used. And I think that's something that is a concern and it was, it, the money was spent for a reason. But why, what, what I would advise as, um, is that I'm not sure. I, I think the danger is that you politicize the, um, the, the van becomes politicized. And I would ask the clerk if she has talked to other, uh, county clerks regarding the policies in counties. Are these vans traditionally in the control of the election board and/or the clerk and voter registration? Is this unprecedented? How often is this done? One of you happens to be up for reelection. I don't think that, how, how do we know? No one wants accusations against Democrats or Republicans in any election year. If this creates a precedent, this is a control by the commissioners of ballot harvesting. And if the van camps out in certain areas that are favor one party or the other and the commissioners are in control of it, I think that's a very bad image. The election board and/or the voter registration are supposed to be the independent entities that Democratic attorney in Nelson, Republican attorney in Waterston and the, and the clerk that ensure a fairness with regard to this. So I think that you're on dangerous ground potentially here. I support you a hundred percent. I think it sounds like the van has not been used and that's, that's, that's just not unacceptable. I think that we can all agree on that. I don't know in terms of the commissioners taking control of it, when you decide on a, will you decide on a two to one vote? Only at commission meetings or privately by email? Is that an open door violation that, oh, it's going to go over here or it's going to go over there? I don't know how this is going to work. Finally, the precedent around, uh, do you take vehicles from department heads, other department heads who are failing in use of those vehicles? Whether sheriff or any other department that has vehicles and say, oh, we're going to take your vehicles away from you. You're not using them properly. It's a usurpation or a taking of sorts. So I would slow down. And I think that this should be left in the hands of the disinterested professionals for all the reasons that, that I state and that to, and, and see what other counties, what other counties are doing with regard to these vehicles. Uh, because I think it, it's in danger of creating an impression of impropriety regarding the commissioners taking control of vehicles when they never otherwise take control of vehicles elsewhere. But I support you in the fundamental, in the fundamental notion that this vehicle has not been used enough. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
I, I did before we even bought the van, talk with other commissioners through my contacts through the, uh, commissioners throughout the state of Indiana. And from a commissioner from a different county told me the one thing you got to worry about is who's in charge of the van. It should be with the commissioners, what he told me. He said, because they had an issue where it got to be like the one-party, party van. And, uh, it was caused some issues there. We have an elected Democrat. We have an elected Republican. And we have the one thing that we need to make sure this is done right. It's called integrity. And I don't think anybody wants to challenge that. I know you're the chief integrity officer there, but, um, we will make sure that it's done and done right because everybody's watching and they should be.
Madam President, I have Clerk Stevens on.
I was finishing my public comment. Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this issue at this time? Okay. So, um, Ms. Stevens.
Okay. So first of all, there's, there's a lot going on here. I want to make it known that Commissioner Mozinski, you do have a key. Because when I took it over to the highway department, they returned it to your office. And it's my understanding that that was done in your direction. This is a mobile voting unit. This is not a mobile registration unit. For the last five years, I've been at every festival registering voters. Everywhere. You don't need a van to register the voters. This thing is new. We are working, working out all of the little details. Not to mention that there's a lot of election law that must be followed. So again, at the end of the day, this is mining. I, I think you guys are overstepping majorly. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Anyone else on Zoom? All right. I would, I believe we have a motion on the floor.
Madam President, I have a, uh, a letter that I received this morning from the election board president, Chuck Waterston, if I may. It starts with, and I'm not sure if the top of this had cut off with the introduction, but, uh, this is, this is what it, uh, what came across to me. Uh, he says, the purpose of the grant, and he quotes, "Must be used exclusively for the public purpose of planning and operat- operationally, operas- operationalizing safe and secure election administration in LaPorte County," end quote. He goes on to say, "To me, it is pretty clear that this mobile voting unit is to be operated by the election board and election board only. I personally do not have any issues with commissioners providing input on where the mobile voting unit does or where, or where it would be best served. We want the public's input as well. My biggest issue with commissioners taking over the mobile voting unit is the view of impropriety. Each commissioner is an elected position and them having control over the mobile voting unit would portray a bad look on the election process, which in this current climate is something we all need to take, uh, steps to avoid. This look of impropriety can be avoided by us all working together as separate units of government to assure that everything is checked and balanced. The mobile unit needs to remain in possession of the LaPorte County Election Board to comply with the purpose of the grant and to ensure secure elections. If someone wants to use the van, please feel free to approach us. Public notice only needs to be issued if the unit is being used as a polling place. We do not need to notify anyone if the van is being used for purposes of registering or, uh, publicly at festivals." Thank you for allowing us a chance to meet before you to discuss this, this, uh, this issue any further as a board. If you have any issues or concerns, uh, or questions, please feel free to reach out to me personally. I am always available to talk elections. Chuck Waterston, election board president.
Thank you.
Personally, some of my, uh, some of my concerns and the, uh, the point of meeting, the, uh, at the last meeting, there was a issue brought up about, um, Attorney Waterston, uh, filling the ga- filling the gas tank up on the mobile view, voting unit himself. Uh, my offer to extend to, uh, fill that mobile voting unit was, uh, to meet them at the gas station and fill it up, uh, when necessary, uh, so that it didn't have to come to the commissioners for that issue. Uh, the, you know, if the commissioners are going to take control of it, well, you've got a, uh, uh, county gas card as well. Commissioner Mozinski, you're more than welcome to, uh, to drive it down there and fill it up yourself. If the commissioners are going to hijack this vehicle. One of the concerns that I have, and we, 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 we've had it brought up and the fellow commissioners spoke on this at the last meeting. Go back and look. And basically what they described in, in wanting to bring this van onboard for the commissioners and to utilize it for what quite honestly could almost only be viewed as ballot harvesting. That's, that's quite concerning to me. We have a process in place now with the election board, with clerk, with the, with the registration. These things need to be followed. Um, the, this notion, this, it's a complete red herring, first of all, that the commissioners, uh, have the title to the vehicle. The commissioners have the title to every single vehicle in the county. Sheriff's vehicle, all patrol cars, vehicles that are with every different department from the highway department are snowplows, all the ambulances. You know, we can take control of all the ambulances and get the keys for them. And when there's emergency, have them come over and check out the keys so they can go save somebody's life. It's, it's, it's a non-squitter. It, it makes absolutely no sense to use that as the term because every single vehicle the county owns is titled under the board of commissioners. To, to single out this one specific unit for that, it just doesn't make any sense. As I said, it's a red herring. So, uh, I vigorously oppose this. I think it's going to cost us the grant and I would not be, uh, surprised if it lands a lawsuit on the county over this as well. Not, not to mention the black cloud it's going to place over us, uh, as we're going into election season. We need to remain fair and impartial and not have anything happen here. And this idea of, I, I am shocked that Commissioner Mozinski would use the word integrity to describe himself. You have sat up here and lied multiple occasions. You've been caught lying. You've been caught on video.
No.
This, this idea that there's integrity there is ridiculous.
That is, okay, you two can take that offline. You're not going to do that at my.
Going to hijack a vehicle that we own?
Okay, sorry, 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 sorry. Control, please.
I have my motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Um, but I, I do have to object to some of the dramatic language that has just been used. Red herring, hijack this vehicle, ballot harvesting. How does registering grandma and grandpa that live at Rittenhouse Village or at, um, live in a neighborhood that is, um, down South County where they can't get to, uh, into register? How is that ballot harvesting? That is just inflammatory language. We are talking about trying to make sure that their right to vote is preserved. Mr. Kimmel made a really good point. I'm a former teacher. High school children don't get any civics lessons at all in our, in our schools because teachers have so many other things that they have to teach. So the, the, the American privilege to vote, those high school kids need to know about that. And by having the ease of having the registration vehicle in their parking lots, so when they break for their lunch at noon, they can come out and register to vote. There's seven high schools. There's a couple of private school, high schools as well. That van should be in the parking lot for all of those kids so that they realize that the privilege that our, uh, military fights to protect, the privilege, uh, as Americans to, um, vote and vote freely. That's not about ballot harvesting. That's about civics. That's about doing the right thing. The van has been sitting idle for almost one full year. We don't have a system for it. Using the gas card, I don't know if the sheriff's department would appreciate their budget being, um, used for, uh, the mobile voter van, but we will have to discuss that with, uh, with them as to whether we can, uh, figure out a, a way. Because when we use our, our card, that is coming out of the sheriff's budget. So we'll have to check on that. But, um, we talked about, uh, we're the only elected officials. That is not true. The clerk is also an elected official. So we're going to start throwing, throwing election, elected officials out there. There's always an election, so there's always somebody up for an election. And if you think that that's about hijacking vehicle and ballot harvesting, I, I'm, I find that very pitiful, actually. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for Mr. Haney? I don't presume we do. Okay. So I'm going to second it. Um, we have a motion to establish a process for use of the mobile voter unit. The van acquired to promote voter access for registration, applications for absentee voting and early voting if needed for use in various locations and events across the county. Depending on the availability of deputy registrars, county employees, Depending on the availability of deputy registrars, county employees representing both political parties, so it would be bipartisan. I have a motion. I'm going to second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
We have two ayes and one nay. Motion is carried. So next on the agenda, we have, under new business, consider contract with Christopher Burke Engineering to assist County EMA Department with the five-year plan to comply with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Mr. Butcher and Mr. Sabey.
It's, this contract is, it's a five-year plan. It comes up every five years. This is what bases most of our grants, what they're, what they're based off of, you know, throughout the year. Basically what we do is we set up meetings with all the officials, you know, fire departments, BEMS, county planning. These meetings will be set up to upgrade our, our county emergency plan. That's what this grant is for.
Thank you. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Christopher Burke Engineering to work on the five-year EMA disaster mitigation plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I think you'll want to go back to 10B if you could.
Yeah, 10B, I, I had, Christie was in my office yesterday. We talked about this at length. I'm very comfortable with what's going on there. I know you've looked it over.
Yes.
Attorney, make a motion to approve that.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the contract for, from the treasurer's office for SEH regarding the 2020 reconciliation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider construction inspection contract with USI for the bridge span in the Cankey Key River on 650 West. Mr. Sullivan.
Good day, commissioners. Thank you for meeting this, this morning. Yeah, there's two things I have. One is for the inspection contract for Bridge 186 over the Cankey Key River, south part of the county. And that is an LPA grant, 8020 grant-funded project through Endot. It's, the total contract amount is for $244,000. So any questions on that?
Is this on the, the USI contract you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And then second, excuse me.
Go ahead. Consider professional engineering design services for Bridge over Long Ditch at 1200 South. The second one?
Yes. Yeah, that's for the professional engineering services for Bridge 166. And that is with BFS Engineering. And that contract amounts for $267,210. And that is also an 8020 funded grant through.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the design services for the bridge over Long Ditch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. I do have, Madam President, I do have one question for you. Endot has set up an electronic signing format for the, this is the LPA contract that is between the, the county and the engineer. Then there is a contract that's between the Endot and the county for the grant money. That's same thing. It's same, same process. But this goes electronically. Have they sent you the, they said they did send you the, okay, they did.
I got one yesterday and I signed it.
Oh, you just, okay. Very good. Thank you very much. That's all I needed to know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Commissioner comments. Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a busy past few weeks. As mentioned earlier in the meeting, visited with the Michigan City Courthouse again for some issues that were up there. Had numerous, numerous meetings as well. I got to go out and visit Seaver Woods and walk the trail out there the day after it opened. Jeremy Specky was up here talking about that earlier. Last night I also saw him as well. We talked about some of the future plans for Parks as Parks liaison at the Parks meeting last night. Also had a really good meeting with the legislative director for Senator Todd Young. We've got a number of different festivals that are coming up. Panfest, Scarecrow Fest, Pumpkin Fest. Get out there and enjoy the, the very end of spring and the start of fall, autumn, whichever you prefer. A lot of great stuff coming up there. One, what, that's something that I do want to touch on. What we discussed with the, with the, with the mobile voting unit. Obviously, I couldn't disagree more with my fellow commissioners. The things I'd like to speak on, in, in the United States, voting is a right. It's not a privilege. As an American citizen, you have a right to vote. A privilege would be, let's say, going to Costco and getting a membership at Costco and going shopping at Costco. That's a privilege. The right to vote is a right. And there is a distinct difference between a right, which is a natural right every American citizen is born with, and a privilege that is extended that can be revoked at any time. We also, America is also a constitutional republic. You know, it is a form of a democracy, but we are a constitutional republic. And I think that's also extremely important to, to understand. I would encourage everyone to go back and watch the last meeting when the discussions were going back and forth about what the van was going to be used for, how it was going to be utilized, and listen to, to the verbiage that was used by fellow commissioners and tell me that that doesn't fall in line with what can only be described as, as the intent to ballot harvest. Inflammatory language or not, go back, listen to it for yourself. When I use the term hijack, I think it's an appropriate term. The election board is charged with administering elections. We've had multiple people talk about the commissioners sending out the mobile voting unit for people to vote. That is an election board function by state law, state statute, federal law. It's the, it's the election board. Commissioners cannot be sending out voting units to vote, to, to, to collect votes. That has to be the election board. And it's, I, it's, this entire notion to me is preposterous. I think we're risking the, losing the grant on this. And I wouldn't be surprised if it brings a suit. You know, one of, one of the worst things is to see one branch government or one entity board, government sue another board. And I would be shocked if this doesn't, doesn't wind up ending in a lawsuit here because it's just unreasonable to seize control of this vehicle. Voting is, is, is something that's sacred in America. It's something that separates us from a lot of countries in the world. If people don't believe in their, like, believe in the elections, don't believe in the process, there isn't openness, there isn't transparency, and the systems and the rules of law aren't adhered to, everything falls apart in this country. And we saw, we saw some various issues that happened during the last election, whether founded or unfounded, that really cost it through a cloud, a dark cloud over the last election. I would love to see our next election here in La Porte County be free of that. So everyone, no matter who it is, can look and say, everything was done transparently, above board. There was no, everything was transparent and above board. And that's what I would like to see here. That's why, that's why I support keeping the van where it is right now. And again, I do think it should be utilized more, absolutely. But, but moving it over, I just, it greatly troubles me. And I know, I know, I've heard numerous things from folks as they've been out at some of the festivals and events these past two weeks, since the last, since the last meeting, that, that, that the people are concerned as well. So anyway, with that, everybody has a, has a great day. And thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Brzezinski.
Yeah, Larry Levandowski gave a pretty good report on our ambulance space. It's something I keep track of quite regularly. We did have another meeting about code enforcement. We are looking at revising the ordinance for code enforcement. We get stuff, I get stuff all the time from people about the need for code enforcement in, in the county. And so that will be coming out soon, the new revised ordinance. I was approached by Reeve Riley a couple of weeks ago. Said, "We have finished all the paving for the county except for the community crossings, which they're working on as we speak. And we still have a lot of good paving weather left." So we got ahold of the county consul and they gave them an extra $300,000 for paving. So we're doing some more paving because you know, like everything else, it'll be more expensive next year. So let's get it while we can. I continue to work on trying to get the VA clinic in La Porte. This committee that was originally set up, that we would have been, had been kind of counting on, the Asset Infrastructure Review Committee, was killed by Senator Manchin from West Virginia. But we just kind of did a little backdoor on that. So I've, I've been in contact and talks with Congressman Mervan, Congressman Braun, Congressman Banks, and also with Senator Todd Young. And we're, we're trying to move it forward, trying to move the ball. And, you know, we have a lot of support out there, but the support we really need it is in Congress to say, yeah, we're going to do that. Yeah, we're going to give you the, the funding to man the place. That's kind of what we really need to do. So I'm not going to let up until we get it. That's for sure. This weekend is the Door Village Festival, one of my favorite. I would suggest that we consider putting the voter van there. I would like a confirmation from the two county chairs and also from the libertarians if they want to participate as to who their volunteer or voter registration person would be, who would be there. It's not going to be a commissioner, not going to be anybody elected. It's going to be voter registration or a volunteer from there who has been properly trained. And as soon as the chairs or voter registration themselves let us know who wants to man that, let us know. We'll sign it out to them and they can go to Door Village. That'd be a, a good thing. And something noteworthy that I, that I read on, it was on the news last night, then I, I looked it up. I, I thought was very interesting in New Mexico, of all places. New Mexico State District Court disqualified a county commissioner because he was a member of the oath keepers. They've got prohibited him from holding public office. So there's a lot of things going on in the United States right now. Not all of it's really good. At least there are good people who are keeping an eye on things. So that's my report.
Thank you. I like to spend some of my time talking about the La Porte County Works Program. The La Porte County Works Program was initiated through some conversations with our Office of Community and Economic Development and our community where we realized we have a lot of unserved companies that have jobs that nobody knows about. They're, they're quietly doing their, their work. We have city, city and county residents who are looking for work. And so we felt like we needed to make, do some matchmaking. So the La Porte County Works Program was founded to emphasize the companies that have dug their roots in here that are part of our community. And we want to honor them. But we also want to make sure that they get the good employees that they need so they can continue to grow in our community. So every meeting, I have been highlighting a La Porte County company. Today, I'd like to highlight La Porte Custom Metal Processing. They're located at, on North State Road 39 in La Porte. The company primarily operates in the steel business and is a coil tool processor. They purchased Level Tech Company in 2014 and that enabled them to grow. They make specialized process products that take raw or semi-finished goods and they process them by stretching, slitting and cut-to-length operations for a wide range of industries. Some of their customers are in aerospace, power generation, rail, rail, cars and bus panels, food service equipment, automotive components companies and, and others as well. They're an in-demand industry. They work cooperatively with several industries to ship products from their floor to the final customer in aerospace, defense, automotive and power generation. They currently have 50 employees. They make between $19 an hour and $35 an hour. And they are anticipating that they will need 20 new employees. Those 20 new employees will start at $19 an hour and move up from there. And of course, depending on their skill set, they will train the employees. They offer a full benefit package, 401K, attendance bonus and referral bonus, eye and dental and shift premium. They also wanted to make sure that people knew that they offered a pleasant and stable place to work. How nice is that? So we are going to post this on our website. There's a phone number for the HR director and that will be on our website. And we also will be issuing a press release this afternoon. So if you are looking for a job, maybe you will be one of those 20 new employees who will start at 19 an hour. They will train you and you can begin a new career path. So we want to thank La Porte Custom Metal Processing for making La Porte County their home. So moving on, I just want to make a brief comment about the mobile voter unit. The mobile voter unit was acquired in a grant for $67,000 to register voters, to register voters. If they want to use it as a mobile voting place, that's an opportunity that the clerk and the voting, the election board can make that decision. The commissioners aren't going to make that a mobile place to gather or harvest votes. We are going to register people. We are going to let people fill out applications for absentee ballots. That's a clerical function that anyone can do. You can go to your computer at home and you can do all of that on your computer. And nobody from voter registration needs to supervise you. You just go in and you fill out some forms. So if the clerk's office and the election board choose to make that a mobile vote, voting place, that is their, they certainly have that opportunity. But it's, it is not a decision that anyone outside of that board will be making. So we will use that for voter registration to make it easy for students and their high school parking lot to register to vote. We will use it to encourage people who want to vote absentee, who will be out of the country, out of the state, are, might be ill or incapacitated, that they can get an application mailed to their home. So nobody is going to be filling out those applications for them. They can fill it out in the, in the unit. So I really think we need to stick to the facts here and take out some of the emotions. This is a bipartisan board. I'm one Democrat. These are two Republicans. We're, we're helping to administer the process, nothing more than that. So I would like to end just by talking about the change in Michigan City's waterfront this summer. They had lifeguards that were extremely well-trained by the Michigan City Fire Department. They had 16 potential drownings and zero fatalities. Those lifeguards, well-trained lifeguards really came through and saved many, many times children. So I, I think we need to congratulate the Michigan City Fire Department. And I certainly am, am grateful. And I'm sure there's a lot of grateful families out there for those well-trained lifeguards. The life, the lifeguards are back to school, so the lifeguards are no longer functioning. So extreme caution needs to be taken at the lakefront in the waning days of summer. Thank you, everyone. This has been a long meeting, but I appreciate you being here. Meeting is adjourned.